No opportunity to add an actual room space. The rooms within the house don't offer an opportunity to subdivide them, so we can't really split this and use this space to achieve the goals. Now, the other thing that would happen that if we were to build within the zone is it would totally disrupt the architecture of the site. And this is what attracted the owner to the site. It is part of the property. I think this ties, actually, in our minds at least, to the understanding of the special circumstances provision. So, I would argue that the limitations here are indeed a special circumstance and don't allow us to build a single story, which leaves us with the option of going to a second story. And what happens when you do a second story is something like this. Of course, we wouldn't do exactly that, but this would undermine the overall goals of the community which are expressed in the general plan. So, we're trying to achieve the maintenance of the character of the neighborhood through the maintenance of the architecture and the site, and we're trying to prioritize privacy, which leads us to the plan that we have proposed. Its orientation is very internal. There's no windows to the side, and all of the glass is oriented to the internal of the site. With that, I will allow Alan Dow to speak. That's on the top of the record as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Alan Dow. I'm the owner with my wife Sherry. We looked at mid-century modern homes throughout the area, in fact, in Contra Costa County, Fremont, as far north as San Mateo Highlands and in Los Gatos. So, we looked for a home of this architectural style. There aren't a lot left in the valley because frankly, the economics of it is that to update a home that's forty-five years old, thirty-five years old, sorry, is just very expensive to insulate the home and so forth. It was a shocker to us how much it costs, to be quite frank. And the economic choice for us really is to either to tear the house down, to demolish it, which would break our hearts, but partly from a dollars and cents perspective, it makes sense, and build a two-level home on that lot that conforms to the plan, or to update this home and with enough square footage, enough usability for us to make sense of the project. And so, that's what we're asking for permission to do. Thanks.
Any questions we have? Anyone? One more question? Thank you. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this variance? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. Would you like to go? Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing is still open?
We're the property owners on the side yard directly opposite them.
Please give your name and address.
I did not understand until tonight what was going on.
Can you give your name and address?
My name is Mangiantini. It's spelled M-A-N-G-I-A-N-T-I-N-I. I live on 45 Fair Oaks Lane. Several years ago, we remodeled our house, and we had, we'd like to get some variances, but we couldn't do it, so we adhered to what we did. So, we went up a little bit. But within the strict yard line variances, we had thirty-foot setback from the side yard, and we couldn't deviate from that. And it got so ridiculous that we wanted to put in our kitchen. We didn't even went outside. We couldn't do it because of the thirty-foot setback of there, although the roof went beyond that. So, when they're getting a fifteen-yard setback and they're going to be fifteen yards closer to our, you know, our yard, that doesn't sound right. I didn't get that privilege, and I don't think they should, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any question? Anyone else like to speak on the variance? Now, we'll close the public hearing. Planning Commission, who wants to start?
I visited the site. I was also educated in mid-century in architectural school, and I have a mid-century modern which I look at from my property. And I was never restricted from putting two stories on a mid-century modern design I was doing in architectural school, and my next door neighbor has a two-story mid-century modern. So, I see no particular reason why the area particularly over the bedrooms could not be converted into the second story or two-story element of the house. Therefore, I would vote to deny the variance.
Mary Beth?
I visited the property also, and I thought, I think that there is a lot of merit in trying to maintain the character of the home and the, you know, the single-story residence. I think that, you know, privacy is very important to all the homeowners. I can't speak to what happened in the past with requests of this nature, but I have seen that we have granted some variances based on some extreme circumstances, and I really would like to hear everybody else's opinion because I haven't totally made up my mind which way I should land on this.
If I may, just real quick, just a gentle reminder that there are certain recommendation or certain factors and legal findings that have to be made, and so, as somebody who might later have to defend any decision that you make, I'd be psyched if you would just maybe phrase your comments in terms of those findings. Excellent. Thank you.
So, this is a difficulty for me because from a, we're not a design review board. We're basically a planning commission that has to deal with compliance to a--
Land use.
Land use. And I believe that the design you proposed, so, living in nineteen sixty, I flirt with the radio E still working. I have a certain level of expertise on this matter. If you're correct, I like the design, but that's not the criteria I can make the decision on. Unfortunately, in this case, it's a totally normal lot. It's not pie-shaped. It's not, there's nothing about it that makes it unique to anything else we have in the neighborhood. So, as part of the decision to buy-- (music playing) --then, it's based on, I don't like to ask for a relationship with it, but I would then, so, I can't decide just what we feel or what we wish that makes me understand how we comply with our ordinances such that the situation of the next-door neighbor and somebody else who comes forward with a rectangular lot that has a normal access doesn't have the same right from this point on. I don't know what I would rest on approval on. So, as dedicated to this design philosophy as I am, I'm also more dedicated to the compliance with the ordinances that keep others in their ways, this sort of spec. So, I'll listen to others on the board to give me more insight than I have, but that's kind of where I am right now.
Thank you, Mary. I visited the site on Tuesday and saw the stakes and all that. I think there are some other options to expand the square footage without causing variance. I think the variance would grant special privileges. There's no particular difference or shape of this lot than any others. It's almost rectangular. It might very well affect the neighbors in many ways, and so, I think I would, and I know I would, move to deny this variance. Now, Mary Beth would say.
I don't think it matters which way.
Put your conscience then.
Is there motion then?
Yeah. You do it. Because I'm not-- Yes. Here. Motion. Formal motion. I move the planning commission to deny the variance of 23 Fair Oaks Lane as required findings cannot be met for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
I'll second that. All in favor of denial? Aye. Aye.
Aye, but not willingly.
Mary Beth?
I'll be opposed.
Opposed. Three approved, three in denial, one opposed. The request for variance is denied. If the applicant wants to appeal, this council, they have ten days to do so in writing. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is special structure permitted at 40 Isabella. Andrea?
Thank you. The next item before you is a request for a special structures permit at 40 Isabella Avenue. This property is within the R-1B zoning district. There's an existing two-story residence on site. The house is nonconforming in regard to both the left and right side setbacks. The required side yard setback is thirty-two feet, six inches, but the existing residence has a right side setback of fifteen feet, nine inches, and a left side setback of fourteen feet, two inches. I'm sorry, that's opposite, left side setback of fifteen feet, nine inches, and right side setback of fourteen feet, two inches. Just a little background too. Commissioner Whitmer had asked for information on the original construction of the home and how it came to be nonconforming. And based on the research, I found a few things. The house, based on county records, looks like it was built back in 1935, and we unfortunately don't have plans going back that far. But I did look up the zoning code at the time, and side setbacks at that time were twenty feet. My guess is that no surveys were required at that time, or they possibly didn't know exactly where the property line was, and so, it was built, you know, to a nonconforming side setback. Our oldest plans going back on that property are to the 1960s, and those plans all do show the house where it is now. Any plans before that, we don't have, and we don't have the original house plans either. But that's kind of all we could find on that property in terms of past approvals. So, the applicant is requesting a special structures permit to add four hundred fifty-three square feet to the existing second floor along the left side of the house only. The second, the addition would be immediately above the first floor footprint. It would not extend out past that. And the left side yard setback would remain at the existing side yard setback for the second floor. No new addition would occur in the nonconforming area on the right side of the residence, and the proposed addition meets all floor area requirements for the lot. The planning commission is able to approve additions to nonconforming main residences in the R-1B zoning district beyond the main building area upon issuance of a special structures permit. The addition has been designed so that there's no windows along the left elevation to maximize privacy for the neighbors. The overall height of the addition will be less than the existing height of the residence, and the sidewall height will be limited to eighteen feet, the maximum allowed within that district. There's extensive existing screening along the elevation, and staff believes the addition will have a minimal impact to the neighbors. In addition, the applicant will be required to submit a landscape screening plan to the satisfaction of the town arborist, which will help provide any additional screening that may be required. Based on these reasons, we are supportive of the special structures permit. We did receive an inquiry from the project to the neighbor, from the neighbor to the rear of the property, and once we explained to him the proposal, he had no concerns. And then, today, we received an email from the neighbor immediately adjacent, that's up at your desk, who is also in support of the proposal. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also here as well. Thank you.
Any question of Andrea?
Andrea, when they go to do this two-story portion to the left-hand side, does that mean they have to put in new foundations and essentially rebuild that portion of the house?
So, they can answer that better, but I can say that if they do do that, they lose their nonconforming status. So, they have to keep fifty percent of the existing walls that are establishing the nonconforming setback.
Yes.
So, tearing that down on the first floor, going down to the foundation, they would in effect lose their ability to build.
Conversely, will those foundations support a two-story structure as opposed to a one-story structure?
I'd have to defer to the applicant. I'm sure.
The answer is yes, it will?
No, yes, it's--
Oh, yeah, the applicant respond to that when he comes in.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. The answer is you don't have--
I don't.
Anyone else? Thank you, Andrea.
Thanks.
We'll close the public hearing. If the applicant here--
Yep.
--has something on the subject?
So, my name is Buck Gall, and I'm the general contractor. And the owner, John Murray, is also here. So, I can address your questions and answer any questions. I think the reports, you know, speaks clearly what we're planning on doing, the intent in regards to adding directly above the existing house but not going beyond.
We're only the planning commission.
Right.
We don't know anything about what the building department approves or in terms of the bearing loads for two structure, two-story structures. That's the source of the question.
So, yeah, to answer your question, I looked at some plans that we believe are the plans for the existing house, that were, you know, designed back in 1935 or something like that. The foundations show that they are consistently the same from the area where it's two stories to where it's one story. So, it's reasonable reason to believe that it should support it. In talking to the structural engineer that we will be using, his comment was, well, if we need to do anything, because we are building a second story over the two corners, we might have to do a little bit of underpinning to the foundation, but we don't have to tear anything down.
Thank you.
Eric, you in?
Nothing. No, it looks pretty straightforward.
I did visit the site, and I was concerned about the ownership and how was the whole thing evolved as Andy was talking about. And I assume that you're not, you and your family wasn't the original--
Correct. I can go through the history of it. We're only, it was built in 1935. We are only the third family to live in that house. So, we were the third family to live in that house, both--
Welcome back from Oregon.
Thank you. And the first family built it, and they were a family from the city, and this was their weekend, you know, home. And the second family moved in was Anna Eschew of our town. She's still here. And her family lived there for fully thirty-five years or something, and then we bought the house from Anna about seven or eight years ago.
And I did go to the site also, and your question was the only question I had on the whole thing is, I didn't want to set up a situation where somebody deliberately built something nonconforming just to come back and add to the nonperformance.
Yeah.
So, it was before the beginning of time, that was okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I had some of the same concerns about continuing nonconformity, but our code clearly says, we can't do this. I found it in the code as well. So, that alleviated my concerns about that. However, during our conversation the other day when we visited the site, you mentioned something about the total renovation of the second floor. You're going to have to live somewhere else. Can you tell us about that?
So, the pool house in the backyard has a bedroom and a bathroom and a kitchen, and it's got everything. So, I was going to live there during the work. Is that not allowed? I'm getting a sigh in the front.
No, so, that's another approval that would be necessary in order to occupy a guest house for more than thirty days.
Oh, really?
They had to, it's everything you want to do.
Am I allowed to--
Can you scratch that for the record?
When I get--
I'm sorry, I sucked you a little bit.
Well, I mean, that's, I can figure out something. I can--
It actually requires planning commission approval, so--
So, I can tell you the way, I can tell you the way our family works. My wife and children live in Sun Valley, Idaho from September to June. The kids go to school there full-time, and they have a ski team up there, they have a second home up there. So, they will not be, the idea is to get this project going right when they move up there. I go back and forth almost every weekend, so I will not be there for thirty consecutive days. I can assure you of that. My kids won't allow it. So, I am back and forth to Sun Valley every weekend for those nine months. And in the winter, I end up spending two months, you know, a good month, but definitely two-month period, you know, over periods of time, a week, ten days, that kind of thing, because they're all on top, the kids are on the ski team. That's how we do it. So, I will be part-time resident in the pool house in the backyard while this is going on.
Made the record show.
Yeah.
We'll let you know what those exact regulations are.
Sure, sure. Okay.
I think Motel Six is in your future.
Yeah. That's okay. The only other thing I was going to say too was the letter from the neighbor. The only thing I was concerned about, well, you all have to do your job, but the one neighbor on that side was the concern. I talked to Joe, Jody. They looked at the plans. They came back. We've had a dialogue now for two days on the topic, and then they sent me an email today, I think. So, that was the one thing that I had to be concerned about.
Thank you. Any further questions?
What's at stake is one foot in that--
I know. In the, I know, and so. But structurally, they need that, Buck needs that edge of the property. You know, they need--
Anyone else desire to speak on this matter? Eric? Yeah, I'll move that the proposal has been determined to exempt from the provisions of California Miracle High Quality Act pursuant to the SEPA Section 5. I have to read this yesterday, 15301, Class 1, which prevents the addition of this construction despite a move the planning commission approved, the structure permits at 40 Isabella Avenue based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report.
Second, please.
Second.
Mary Beth, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose?
Yeah, we didn't get a chance to do this. My opposition, because I get the vote last, and I'm, it is chopping off one foot of a twenty-six or twenty-five-foot long bedroom, particularly, and that was the reason I asked about the building, the foundations, particularly when you're going to have to do something with the foundation, does not seem onerous to me. And therefore, I get a chance to say I'd like to enforce the code after having been outlawed.
Thank you, William. The request is approved. If you desire to appeal to the council, you have ten days to appeal to the council in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is eight Brittany Meadows, special structures permitted.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a special structure permit to construct a detached accessory building with a basement. The applicant proposes to replace a small pool house in the rear yard with a new accessory building that would include a basement. The accessory building is proposed at just over five hundred and twenty-seven square feet in area with full basement level. The accessory building would be thirty-one feet from the side property line and thirty-nine feet from the rear property line, which noted in your site inspection, the property bounds Harton Field, that's owned by Mendel School, Mendel College at the rear. Basement level is accessed through an interior staircase only. There are no light walls associated with this basement. The building would have an open trellis adjacent to the existing pool, and it does comply with all of our height limits as well as setback requirements. There's no heritage trees proposed for removal. Kevin guilty did conduct to site inspection and noted that no trees would be in conflict with the accessory building area, but he does want to make sure we have a tree protection plan along the access area to preserve and make sure there's no damage to other heritage trees. The development of the accessory building with a basement is consistent with the residential land use for the site, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Lisa? Anyone?
No.
If there is no question, Lisa will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Steve, guys are-- Just a couple brief points.
Go ahead.
Is that a motion for the chair? We brought a sketch-up presentation, if you'd like to see it. Or maybe not. Just a couple points. We wanted to do something very simple in form back there. We wanted to keep it away from the trees. We were very concerned about keeping it private for neighbors, so we had all of our plans into our yard. Pretty straightforward. We did go ahead and take the hit on the floor area by enclosing the staircase. It's very important to this family to have a year-round accessible exercise area as part of their daily routine, and we felt that an exterior light wall was a little dangerous in the wintertime. It's pretty inciting. So, we went ahead and enclosed it. Lastly, we did invite the neighbors to meet with us, and we didn't get any response from the neighbors. So, I guess we don't get to show your--
You're-- Give us your shot.
He's taller.
There's all kinds of potion.
She's a little--
I'm covering my eyes.
Do you have to use a super ear music to go with that?
It's playing here, but not there.
It's not on.
It's not on.
Oh, it's green.
I just need one more click probably. Oh.
Just, I think, sorry, questions?
Yep.
It's going to be a real logistic problem getting building materials and debris out of there. I think you've thought of that. We talked to the owners, and wow. It's going to really take some effort. And secondly, where are you going to relocate those horrible air conditioners?
There is a fenced area that we're going to put them in because they are very inciting right now.
Yeah.
There's a fenced trash area where they need to go. I don't know why they want to put there. So, we have a barbecue area planned for where those air conditioners--
You're going to barbecue the air conditioner?
Yeah. And we'll just set the barbecue right on top of the air conditioning barbecue chipper.
It needs to be taught on the computer to display on the monitor.
Do you realize there's an inverse correlation in this planning commission between the time taken and presentations, and the answer given is yes?
This is, I'll say that I'm chairman of the planning commission in my town, and this is the fastest meeting I've ever seen with the number of items. And the applicant, just the homeowner, just reminded me that our plan is to remove that wall to get access back there and then rebuild.
Yes, she's almost said also. There's a pop quiz.
Oh, not a map.
Yeah, just choose, just choose, just choose--
Here, here, this one.
I see.
Sorry, sketch-up flag for you here.
Oh, cool.
We're supposed to go, ooh.
Ooh. Okay.
Setting the bar pretty high for the next applicant.
I lost one. That's why we--
Yes.
Where are the squirrels?
I left out the palm trees.
They had the barbecue.
We know where.
You're not going to see wheelchair access down there.
All right. Very cool. Okay.
It just flies around to the back now so you can see how the windows are.
What's a hole here over on the left?
Those are the redwood trees.
Oh, trees. Oh, got it.
That big one's the heritage tree.
That's cool. So, happy to answer. Any questions? After that.
Very good.
Thank you.
And you know the lights, so.
Any further questions we have? Anyone?
No.
Okay. Eric?
I have no question.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the planning commission? I'll start. I visited the site on Tuesday, and it was very well planned, as we saw just now, and I'm in favor of granting this, so.
Don't influence this, Charlie.
For me.
You can't influence this.
Yeah.
I visited the site and found it all terribly straightforward. Almost boringly so.
I went to the site, and I'm glad that you have the additional information that I said that's a problem.
Move in a motion, please. Over here, we have some more comment.
I don't really have any comments. And everyone says it's great.
I move that the planning commission approved special structure permitted in eight Brittany Meadows based on the funding for the new area in the staff report, subject to the condition was to draft a special structures permit to allow a basement on an accessory building.
Well done.
That's how we get it fast.
Second.
Second.
Mary Beth, second. Move in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? If none, the application is approved. If you disapprove of this action, you can appeal to the council within ten days in writing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now for the next three hours.
Ordinance amending, answer the municipal code, chapter seventeen--
Now for the next three hours.
Ordinance amending Atherton Municipal Code, Chapter 17.40, accessory structures in buildings and structures.
Thank you. This item has been discussed at a couple of your meetings and I thought it would be helpful to have the building official, Brett Hale, present at this meeting. And I asked him if he wouldn't mind giving kind of a quick overview of the building code, what items are within the building code, describing a little bit about kind of separation between structures and walls. Just turn it over.
Good evening. I'm Brett Hale. I'm the building official for the town of Atherton. I've been asked to come here and talk briefly. And so I just want to take a moment to give you an overview of building and fire, how we enforce it, and how it relates to the separation of structures and appliances from a fire life safety perspective. Mine's not a land use perspective, strictly fire life safety. So as you may know, the building codes and fire codes, we all cover basically three areas. And the first one is wind, seismic, and gravity for structural. The next component is sort of our environmental, which is energy efficiency and green building. And the final item, and one of the largest ones, is what we call fire life safety. And at that point, this is where we get into this item here. And so looking at it from a safety separation, we look at what's needed for clearance to combustibles, types of construction. Other components of fire life safety are fall protection, things like that, emergency egress, fire sprinklers, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. Equipment, including fire pits and barbecues, what we see range from unlisted gas and wood units to fully UL-listed equipment. With that, I think it's important to note that the requirements for listed equipment can go from zero. We can set them right up against combustible construction. Unlisted gas appliances, usually three feet away. Unlisted wood, sometimes 25 feet. So any numerous numbers between that. We have thousands and thousands of different types of equipment out there and any variation can happen. So our responsibility from building and fire is to address that on installation. So when somebody comes in for a barbecue or a gas fire pit, we either ask for the listing. If it's not listing, how are we going to address it? So that's the fire life safety component. I went ahead and discussed this. I interact regularly with the fire department. And we just wanted to say, we agree it's covered in the building, the mechanical and the fire codes by following those standards that we're required to enforce. And while eight foot might work for some equipment, I think it's not enough for all equipment. So sometimes our applicants come in, customers come to the counter, they follow the zoning code, they want to place a piece of equipment at eight feet and I can't approve it. So sometimes it's a little misleading. And sometimes they want to come in and put it three inches away and it's fine. It doesn't propose any fire hazard at all. So tonight, that's just what I want to talk to you about. From a fire life safety perspective, zero to whatever, I think that falls under our purview. You have any questions?
I know what listed equipment is.
Listed equipment goes through, like Underwriters Laboratory, Warnock Hershey, many others. There's Canadian listing systems. So they go into a lab, usually to an ANSI standard. They're actually tested in there and determined how far they need to be to combustibles. In many of your homes, you might have wood stoves or something like that. They say on the back of them exactly how far they need to be to combustibles. If you go look at your FAU unit or your furnace, many of those are down to one inch now. Or zero. And so that's actually tested at a lab and listed. Any other questions?
Any questions?
I'm just thinking, you know, we're looking at changing the code. And I have a concern that you're about these five inches. What is your perspective on this?
Well, my perspective as the building official is if they meet the code, then I allow them. I think that they don't propose any more safety hazard than anything else that we do. We address everything specific to the appliance or the piece of equipment. I have fireplaces, gas fireplaces inside of homes. We have fireplaces and wood burning fireplaces that are freestanding outside. And people split their chairs next to them all the time, you know. And the code isn't going to address everything or we would have everybody living in bubbles with fences around everything. And we don't do that. We try to make it as safe as possible while still being practical.
Any further questions?
Do you have any strong feelings about eight feet versus nine versus seven?
I have. As far as the building official goes, in my personal, it's what everybody, it's what people want at their home. What difference does it make to say, I want my barbecue at three feet and put a counter between it and the wall and now it's connected? It's...
It's mushy.
And as long as it's safe, which is what our job is, you know, that's what I'm going to look at.
And you treat these on a one-by-one basis when they come through the door?
Every job, like every home, like the non-conforming two-story, every one of them's looked at.
So the matter of feet from and to is it's taken into consideration, but it doesn't particularly drive the decision?
The only decision is if you want to come in and put it at 18 inches, is that piece of equipment listed for that? If not, you're going to have to come up with a different piece of equipment or a different distance.
Well, all right, so it is super specific.
Very specific, yes.
Super specific. Boy.
So why would we rewrite the code to take that into consideration rather than...
Give me an ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, well, the building code is updated how many years?
Every three years. We just updated it in January.
So the building code would continue to be enforced regardless, you know, of the zoning code requirements. Whatever's been more restrictive would continue to be enforced. So we don't have to reference shall comply with the building code. It has to comply with the building code. I guess the other answer to the question is there's a lot of if this, then that's. So it could be a fire pit, needs to be, and I'm making stuff up, 10 feet away from a wood structure, but could be three feet away from a concrete structure. So there's a lot of different situations that the building code has all those specifics in there. And I'd be concerned about writing all that into the...
That's the type of construction that Lisa asked me to speak about. I apologize for that. Things like masonry construction, we worry much less than mechanical code says. If you want to take an unlisted piece of equipment, do a certain barrier on the wall. You can drop that clearance to 18 inches. So we have very specific guidelines that we have to follow.
So in terms of zoning and in terms of the safety in the zone, safety is generally overridden by the building code.
Correct. And there may also be a fire code. There's building codes and fire codes are separate as well.